Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming to the February 14th Valentine's Day edition of the New London Planning Board meeting. Let's start with looking at the January 24th minutes. Does anybody have any questions?
I actually think we don't have those yet, so we can defer.
Okay. Just kidding, we'll do that later. Also, just a quick note for folks that we are recording, so just so that you know that this meeting is being videoed. Okay, so just taking a look at our agenda, this is the point where we look for public comment. If somebody has something they want to talk about that's not on the agenda, is there anybody here who has something that they wanted to bring up that is not part of the agenda? Okay, then let's dive right in. We will start with the tree cutting from the Clough Revocable Trust.
And I don't think I turned that on, so if you flip it over, there's a little button on the bottom, just hold that and...
All right, I think we got it.
There you go.
All right, good evening. My name's Arthur Haino, owner and operator of Arthur Haino Log and Tree Service. I'm here on behalf of Bill and Key Clough from 57 Moye Lane. They've got some very big concerns on the pine tree that lays out behind their house. So I guess I'm here just to verify any concerns that maybe you guys have for removing this tree.
Yep.
The tree has actually surpassed its maturity and now it's like the limbs are actually snapping off it. It's a big hazard and it's got like a six-foot seam down at the butt where the ants are starting to get into it and, you know, it's just a can and it's really a hazard to them just to go outside and get in their backyard.
And Adam has some details on that, too, Marian.
Yep, so I did a site visit last week with Bill and Key and if you look up at the monitor here, it's this pine tree right at the shore's edge. There were some pretty badly damaged limbs that have broken off and then, as Arthur mentioned, there was a pretty severe crack down the side that unfortunately the lighting was not great, but that goes right down to the base. The only issue that I see presenting here is that though the cell does not have enough points once this is removed, as you can see by the shoreline here, it's not really conducive to replanting. It is a very rocky shoreline and even, you know, I was sort of digging through the snow in different spots and it was just granite everywhere, so I'm not really sure how feasible it would be for them to replant. You can see that basically the entire shoreline is covered in native blueberry bushes that grow up between the rocks. There's where you can see here where the dog is, there's a little, maybe four-foot wide path that goes down to their beach and dock, but I'm not sure that there's really a feasible spot for them to replant in this cell. Does anyone have any thoughts?
Yeah, questions? Go ahead, Marian.
How big is the cell and can they plant further back, do you think?
So it's 25 by 50, but their house is in a portion of the 50 feet because the house is from the 30s, so it was pre-existing.
Grand time.
Right. So you can see where their docks are stacked here. There's still boulders under the docks that they stack on top in the winter.
Other questions, comments?
Adam, have we ever had a case where we've allowed somebody to take the tree out and leave the stump in the ground to hold the stump and roots to hold the soil in place for some time period?
The stump always has to stay.
Right.
So that's regardless of if they have points or not, the stump is left intact.
Other comments, questions?
Is there any other alternative?
I'm not sure. I mean, the tree is a hazard, you know, you can see where big limbs have broken off and where it's cracked, so, you know, clearly it does need to come off. The shoreline faces west and you can see a couple other trees in that vicinity have gone in the direction of their house. They're really quite sad to lose this tree, you know, it provides all the shade, so it's not something that they're, you know, taking lightly, you know, and he said, "Well, even if you said no, I guess I would be only be half sad," because they really love the tree, but they're really starting to get nervous.
Yeah, and it definitely poses a risk to anybody that stands out back. I mean, it has to come out. I mean, eventually, I don't think I'd let Mother Nature take its course and bring it down that way. It would, you know, it would probably end up taking their house out or hurting someone.
Any other opportunities for planting?
You know, it's a fairly, other than this spot right in front of the house, it's a fairly well-wooded lot. There's really very little open space. It's, you know, basically an untouched 30s cottage, seasonal cottage. You know, I think we did have an example last summer where, I think it was at the Cottrell's house, where they had a similar scenario, that tree that came up through their deck and the deck literally covered the cell, and I think we allowed them to replant outside of the cell. So we could do something like that here, you know, and ask that they plant, you know, a few points of blueberry bushes outside the cell, but I will say it's a very well-wooded spot.
So is the reason why they don't have enough space because the house occupies most of the cell?
The house occupies a portion of the cell, but really I think it's the growing condition of the ground.
Yeah, I think the rocks recede back too far and it looks like they're pretty deep, so I think you'd have to pull some permits to move the rocks and I don't think that would be, I mean, blueberry bushes will grow on it as you see, so I mean, that's probably what will take over.
Any other comments? Any questions or comments from the public?
Yep, so a motion to, so I guess you have a choice whether to just allow the removal period or whether to require that some, something be re-planted outside of the cell.
Adam, could you comment as to whether there's any benefit to the property of the lake or whatever of replanting other than in this cell? I'm hesitant to order someone to do something that has, does not convey a benefit.
Right, I mean, there's, I guess, more vegetation, there's always a benefit to it. However, this is a pretty well-vegetated site, so I don't think that it would be a pretty trivial amount of additional vegetation in relation to what's there.
That's a good question. You want to make a motion?
No, I don't have a question. I made a motion. I make a motion that we approve them taking down this tree without the obligation to replant on the property.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining? Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Art. Next up, we have the Snyder Trusts, Tom.
All right, you guys. Good, thank you. We are proposing the removal of a 24-inch, a Tom Conway, Tom Conway, yeah, proposing the removal of the 24-inch red maple. It's 80% dead, same situation, leaders have broken off, there's mushrooms on the top half of it. His dock does end up going out there, they park their boats in that little cove there. We will be saving the little tree that's next to it, it's like a two-inch red maple. It will put us below the points before and after, obviously, but we did the math and we have to, Dan is proposing to plant 40 square feet of blueberry bushes to replace that tree in that cell. That'll give us the 10 points from removing that tree. And he likes blueberry bushes because it feeds the wildlife, the ducks, birds.
And I'm sorry I forgot to take a picture yesterday when I went out with Tom, but we did go do a site visit. The tree is very dead and needs to come out. This is somewhat different than the last one in that there is plantable area, there's lawn and spots where the blueberry bushes could be added.
And we were gonna say like July 15th to have blueberry bushes planted by July 15th, which gives him a couple months' growing season to get them established, so, yeah.
Tim, I've got a question.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Why don't they want to plant another tree?
Why don't they want to plant another tree?
Right.
I think he's very wooded as well and honestly, he just likes the wildlife that comes to the yard. The ducks will feed off the blueberry bushes, birds, yeah.
I guess I'm not comfortable with planting blueberry bushes when you can plant a tree if you're gonna take one down and you have acreage to do that.
Right.
It would seem the logical thing would to plant another tree.
Yeah.
But I realize from a view standpoint, blueberry bushes are a little bit lower and it's easier to see.
It doesn't, I mean, I know what you're saying, but that's, his view is, or his house is further away.
Yeah.
Yeah, like that doesn't, yeah, it doesn't support a view for him.
Yeah.
And his comment has always been, he has enough of a view, so he doesn't, it's not like he's gaining.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with blueberry bushes in lieu of a tree, I guess.
Tom, do you think he would do sort of a hybrid, maybe one small tree and 20 square feet of blueberry bushes?
Right.
To sort of balance the two or? Just a proposal. Trying to compromise.
Yeah, I mean, I think, again, it's not, it's not a view purpose, he liked, you know, his reasoning was the wildlife, but I don't think he cares much about the view, so if it has to be a tree, then I don't think that'll be an issue.
Are there other comments, questions?
Yeah, it's, right.
Sort of.
It's, we have, yeah, correct. So from his house, it doesn't do anything, but.
Right, kind of in this spot here.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yeah, Key.
If it were only trees, how many trees would we need, small trees?
So it's 10 points, so, you know, it depends on how many.
You know, how large caliber can you get? I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, depends on how much money is to be spent, but a tree, let's say that's two, three inch in diameters, I mean, could be 300 to 600 bucks at a nursery, not including, you know, planting, which I don't do, that would be on his gardener, but, I mean, if you needed to buy 10 trees, that would be, I mean, thousands, yeah.
I mean, I think you could get, you know, if you're looking for a 10-point replant, you know, 20 square feet would get, of blueberries would get you to half of the five points and then depending on the nursery stock, I mean, you'd have to sort of leave it to them to say, you know, you need to replant five extra points of trees, whether that works out that they can find a tree large enough that that's one tree or whether it ends up being two trees because that's what the nursery has.
Yeah, I mean, buying a six to 12-inch tree is, you know, I mean, that's six inches. I'm sure, yeah, I mean, there's, they're out there, but.
Good question, Key, any other comments?
So, I mean, are folks comfortable with saying, oops, sorry, Marian?
Could you put up hand-drawn cells for a second, please?
Oh, that's the Clough, sorry.
In cell number one, I see a before 21 points and an after 11 points.
Cell number two.
Are we dealing with that?
That is the cell.
Is that the space?
Yep.
But the, but the cell is actually, the red maple is the 24 inches above that, so what's the line going through that? Could you?
That's your 50-foot reference line.
Okay.
So this is the cell area.
All the numbers are describing the cell property.
Okay. All right, that was my last question.
And I'm not 100% sure, but looking at the old site plan earlier, I think the reason this cell does not have any planting is this was where one of the cottages, Leachfield, well, I think before the cottages got subdivided, when there was like the little cottage colony, I think the actual, one of the actual cottages looked like it was located here.
Oh, okay.
So are folks, I mean, as far as a motion or is, if they need to replace 10 points, are you comfortable saying five points of that as shrub and five points of that as tree and leaving it to the owner to report to us what composition that makes up?
I'm okay with that compromise.
Okay. Anyone else? Is that, should I show heads? Okay. All right, so is there a motion then potentially for splitting that half and half with half shrubs, half tree?
I move that the 24-inch red maple is removed with a replacement of five points of shrubbery, presumably blueberry bushes, and five points of trees in various configurations that make up the five points.
Sure.
And that they would let us know what that is.
And, and so we'd have them let us know by July 15th.
Right.
Does that seem, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, thanks, Tom.
Thanks, guys, have a good night.
All right, moving on, we have a lot line adjustment involving the McKenzie Family Trust and the Loryos.
Hi, Chris Lorio. Do I need to say anything? Yeah, so we are just looking to annex 0.4 acres of land from Brian and Linda to, as you can see on the screen right there, the idea is to add on to our driveway. The way our driveway goes in, we have a, we come down, the house is to the left and then there's a big hill that goes down. So as we, as our children get older and have hopefully cars or a car, we'd like to be able to have a spot for a car because right now we'd have to put it in the middle of the driveway, it would be hard in the winter for us to come out, we don't have space in front of the garage, so it allows us to put that there and we might also put a, paint some pickleball lines and play pickleball if that's an opportunity, so. Brian and Linda obviously agree to this, they couldn't attend the meeting tonight, so here we are.
Sure, so both lots stay conforming in acreage and in road furniture. The road furniture does not change at all and as Chris mentioned, the acreage is, you know, trivial.
Right.
And so really the only finding of fact is that they, they stay conforming lot sizes and conforming road furniture.
Are there questions from the board?
Just a question, none of this is wetland?
No.
And?
What if, wasn't?
Could, yeah, I see the piece of property, could you tell me how far that extends from the current line? Is that 40 feet or?
Clayton would actually have it, I don't know exactly the feet.
Rough.
I mean, the full length of a car plus a couple extra feet and then there's a 10-foot buffer.
Okay.
Adam, is there any reason not to approve this? Adam, is there any reason not to approve this? This seems pretty straightforward.
No, yeah, it is pretty straightforward and the scale drawing said about 30 feet, yeah.
Are there other comments or questions from the board? Okay, is there someone who would like to make a motion?
Just want to ask.
Oh, yeah, sorry, moving too fast. Anybody from the public who wanted to weigh in? All right, sorry about that, thanks. Now back to the board, anyone who would like to make a motion?
I move that we approve of the lot line adjustment for the McKenzie Lorio properties.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So we'll get everyone to sign the mail-in letter tonight and then I'll just shoot Laura an email tomorrow and let her know what the checks are for the registry and then we can get it.
Sounds good. All right, thank you, thanks. Have a good night.
Yep, so we have the mail-in letter back here, so we'll have to sign it tonight before we leave.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Now we would like to talk about the final site plan review for Mount View Shopping Center LLC involving Dorothy Hitchmoth and her proposed new space.
Hi, thanks, I am Dorothy Hitchmoth. Thanks for being here on Valentine's Day. So do you need me to review the plan or?
Yeah, if you could just talk a little bit about what you plan to do.
Sure, so I currently occupy, according to the plans that you see there on the screen, 1,500 square feet in the front of what used to be the old Colonial Building. Behind my office, if you will, there's an additional 830 square feet that's directly adjacent and Concord Internal Medicine is on the right-hand side if you're facing the front of the building, and I'm sure many of you have seen that. That space, the 830 square feet that we plan to renovate and expand into is pretty much the only space left in the building that hasn't been re-renovated since Colonial left that space, so I am certainly interested in occupying that space because there is an insatiable demand for ICAR in the town of New London and so, and we have some expanded procedures and exam rooms that we'd like to add into the space. The space on three sides has already been sort of renovated, the demising walls from my current office and also Concord's offices are on three sides, so there's really not a ton of demolition that needs to be done. The floor is down to the cement already, there's one wall that has a little bit of sheet rock on it that needs to be stripped down to cinder blocks that are there, which will not be blasted or moved. Really, it's just a lot of internal rehab, if you will, so new walls, although we're not putting many walls, as you can see from the plans, the electrical panel that's in our current office has the capacity to feed into this adjacent space. We reviewed the fire safety plan to make sure that there's not going to be any surprises and we also have capacity for the, from the current fire box, if you will, to move into that space. So what else can I tell you?
When do you plan to start?
Whenever you guys tell me that we can.
So I met with the department heads, they didn't have any concerns, you know, it's a fairly small addition to your office. Just for the board's knowledge, you know, I know you're all aware that when something's under 1,000 square feet, we can change the use without going through this. Because this would be appended to the space and cumulatively would be larger than 1,000 square feet, that's why we're here, for public hearing. But no concerns, as far as finding of facts, it's an allowed use in the commercial zone and there are no exterior site changes, parking, lighting, anything like that, all stays the same. Is it dead?
I got it, thank you. I was curious about emergency exits, if one, if there's one that exists currently that was used in the past.
So right now in my office, there are two egresses, we would be adding two more. So one would be on, so if you're familiar with the building, and actually, maybe I should mention this, one of the things that we've discovered being in the current space is, and I have a lot of elderly patients, it, we think it would be a little safer for them to enter the inside of the building through the double doors that are on the front into that common walking space, less trip and fall hazards inside, less damage to the inside of the office from the salt and the sand and all that kind of stuff. And it will also create a loop so that we're not, even though we're within code, we don't have people in walkers and wheelchairs trying to pass each other in the hallway, we create a loop by, by adding these additional doors. We're gonna add an additional door in the back, not because we have to, but more or less so I can sneak in, but we, we will end up with four, four egresses. With three, all of them will ultimately lead to the outside, one of them will be directly to the outside.
So one additional door leading to the outside that you'll create?
Two.
Two.
Mm-hmm.
You said one will go to the outside?
So one is already directly to the outside.
Okay.
There's another egress because when we built, we needed two or another door and that goes into the common area, we'll have a second set of doors into the common area and then a, excuse me, a third set of doors into the common area total, in the total space, and then another door in the very back that goes into a common area with Concord Internal Medicine that leads to the back parking lot. So like, for example, if something happened in the front of the building and all of the front of the building were blocked or destroyed, we would still have a way to get out the back, if that makes any sense.
And vice versa, if something were to happen in the back?
Right, exactly. Even for EMS purposes, you know, it's always, we're happy to have more exits or entrances, so.
And, and as a commercial building, all of their building permits are issued through the state fire marshal's office, so over and above our own fire department doing the review, it does go to the fire marshal for their review.
So would there be a question about lighting of those doors?
That's all, in order to be considered an egress door, there are particular standards that have to be met for lighting.
Are there other comments or questions? What about from the public, anyone? Okay, someone like to make a motion on this?
I would gladly accept the application as presented.
Second.
Okay, great, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck.
Thanks, Dorothy. So one thing that I have just to go over with you guys real quick, at the conclusion of our last meeting, we had discussed acquiring third-party reviews for the transportation analysis that was done for the Long Meadow Commons project, the Twin Pines Long Meadow Commons project. And so I reached out to a consultant, it's a VHB, which is a large engineering firm all over New England, but particularly Jason Plord, who I've worked with in the past through a couple of projects at the Planning Commission, and so we have the estimate for the scope of services to be done, just today we got it. So they estimate $3,000 worth of third-party review on the traffic analysis for that project, so I plan to move forward with signing the contract with them and then we get the $3,000 from the applicant, the town does not bear that cost, but then we pay the engineers so that they don't have a relationship, so, unless anyone has any concerns with that. And then as far as the sewer third-party review, which was the other one we had discussed, that will happen through our existing contract with Underwood Engineers, who is the sewer department's regular engineer.
No, I think it's me, but thank you anyway. Thanks, Tim. I had a question.
Sorry.
Yeah, remember, it's okay. So, is the applicant Twin Pines?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, Long Meadow Commons is the name of the project, so, it's a VHB, Vanessa Hangan in Brussels.
So I'm a little bit confused, exactly where is this project at?
Speak in your mic, you've got a sheet.
Sorry, I'm a little confused, where is this project at at the present time?
So at our last meeting, they concluded their preliminary site plan review.
Yeah.
And so last week, we got their application for their final site plan review, so that process will start at our next meeting on the 28th.
Okay.
So I think it's probably somewhat optimistic to think the engineers would have a review done by the 28th, but they didn't have, you know, they needed their final site plan done before the engineers can really start, even though it didn't change the traffic analysis, it's still 60 units. But they didn't have, you know, they needed their final site plan done before the engineers can really start, even though it didn't change the, the traffic analysis, it's still sixty units. The engineer really can't do their job without seeing the actual layout of that traffic. So I think it's pretty much guaranteed that, um, you know, we'll have another meeting with them, you know, the, the final will not be a, a one and done. I'm sure you guys will have questions and comments and those sorts of things that they'll have to address. But at the very least, we'll be waiting for a couple of report outs from our engineer.
Is there any, um, do they have an estimate on the sewer review?
Um, so they were supposed to be getting, um, Bob Harrington, um, today, the, the sort of very technical sewer drawings, which are a little bit different than what we see at site plan. So we don't have that estimate from Underwood yet. When we've had other projects done recently, it's been in the five thousand dollar range. So, but again, that, we ask for the money upfront from the applicant before we incur any costs with the engineers. Often, I mean, sometimes we have to go back and ask for more because throughout the course of a project, it, the review expands, but.
And Adam, on the traffic analysis, are they taking into consideration what's going on across the street with continuum?
So that was, so this, this project is not, or this contract is not a new traffic analysis? So because the applicant's traffic analysis took that into consideration, it will all be included because this is just a review of the project that they conducted.
Okay.
Adam, just a point of information. When, when they review the traffic analysis, do they also review the internal circulation?
Yep, yep, so I can read you the three points on here if that's helpful. But it, so they, they review for compliance with applicable Town of New London, um, site plan regulations, Town of New London driveway regulations and, um, private road regulations. And then they review the, um, project trip generation data and compare with the Institute of Transportation Engineers methodologies. And then they review the site distance analysis methodology conducted at the proposed site driveway for consistency with applicable local, state, and national guidelines and requirements. And then they will summarize findings of the traffic peer review in a letter for submittal to the New London Town Planner.
Are there other questions or comments?
I'm glad we're doing this, we needed to.
Thank you, Adam, for pursuing this.
Everyone comfortable with me moving forward with them?
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for doing that.
And then I think we have one more person who wanted to introduce herself. I'll, I'll let Renee do that for herself.
So you guys are very efficient, if you don't mind, I'm sorry, I know your public comment is technically closed.
No, you're good.
Sorry, yes.
Thank you, we try to be.
Yes, very efficient, so I, it's like seven o'clock when it is Valentine's Day, so, um, I won't keep you too much longer. So my name is Renee Thial, and I just wanted to quickly introduce myself. I am the Housing Navigator with the Upper Valley Lake Sommeby Regional Planning Commission. So I just started the end of January, so I'm a couple of weeks in. But I just wanted to make introduction. Um, I, it's a two-year grant and project and it's, as, um, you might be aware, it's with the towns of New London, Wilmot, Newbury, and Sommeby to help add capacity for the towns with, um, the housing conversation, housing engagement over the next two years. And you guys have done great work, the Housing Commission, um, I met with them, uh, a week and a half ago at their meeting and met Peter Nichols and everyone there. And they've done great work over the year along with Adam and you guys with reviewing and doing the proposed amendments, so, um, excited to see how that goes. But just wanted to quickly introduce myself, you might see me around and, um, I'd love to keep attending the planning board meetings, um, as I can and if anything comes up. Yeah, Renee Thial. Yes, so last name or both? So Renee is R-E-N-E-E and my last name is Thial, T-H-E-A-L-L, Thial. English, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Hi Renee, I'm Katie Vedeva. With the Upper Valley Planning Board and the New London Planning Board, what is the collaboration? Is it more informational or is it financial as well? If, I've, I've been, I've, I've learned about this in the past, but I'm just trying to clarify. So there were, like, with sidewalk building, was that something that we collaborated with? No, that was a different entity. I thought there, like, what, is there grant funding?
RPC. So my position is grant funded, yes. So the RPC does a lot of work in, um, their region, going all the way down to Charlestown, north to Lyman Orford. And that can be by, like you said, project-specific as well. My particular, I am the Housing Navigator slash Associate Planner. My particular position is a grant from the state from Invest New Hampshire and Plan New Hampshire with the BEA. So there was, uh, three million dollars that was put into Invest New Hampshire for housing, to look at it, to try to get things going within communities and towns. And the Housing Navigator was a program that was created to try to help kind of get the community engagement piece going. So kind of like a phase one, if you will. So it is a grant, all four towns did do a proposal and asked for this grant. And the grant was given and rewarded, so it's a two-year project, so through September, October-ish of twenty-four is where we're at. So we've got about twenty months going, twenty-one months going still, so. Just to help.
In terms of community involvement, did you say? So like with our community and our professional workforce housing, um, is that a role that you would help with?
It can certainly help, yep, over the next few months and however, the planning board, Housing Commission, if there's events, um, that you would like, that they would like help with or surveys to be done, there's technical assistance that I can reach out to with the RPC as well and gain some there. And then, um, again, regulation-wise, you guys are already going that way. So you're, you're in a, a different spot than Wilmot, for example, or, um, Newbury has done some work too, but each one is kind of at a different spot in their town. And then also maybe potentially down the road, looking collaboratively at all the towns and how they kind of fit together.
I, the, the point of looking at the towns together is something that we had talked about when we were, um, talking about our, our plan and our zoning. And I think that's so important in terms of how are these surrounding towns, especially in the Kearsarge School District, going to work together? And what are the other towns' kind of responsibilities in the bigger picture?
Is this a statewide program, so you have counterparts? So how many regions are there?
It is. Well, so the regional, so the planning commissions, um, there are, Adam, correct me if I'm wrong? Nine? I was gonna say, I was gonna say nine. Nine regional planning commissions in the state. And that is state-mandated, uh, and they've been there for quite a while in all the different regions. I do know the, um, I just was connected yesterday with a couple of other housing navigators with other regional planning commissions. So I know, um, in southern area, there's, um, three or four towns, I believe it's Fitzwilliam, Spofford, Chesterfield is also having a housing navigator, work on their community is there. And again, to Katie's point, housing doesn't stop at your town line. So I think it's really, like she said, I think it's really beneficial to look at the area cumulatively. Um, and, you know, it might not be right this second, but again, this is a two-year project.
So do you have a fixed amount of money for your region or is it floating depending on what you do? In other words, do you have to compete against the other regions for funding for programs?
Yep.
So Joe, not all planning commissions got this grant, um, not all planning commissions applied for this grant. But they had to have, you know, towns that they wanted to move forward with it. So Upper Valley, Southwest, and I think it was Rockingham, but I can't swear, Rockingham region.
Believe so.
They were the three planning commissions that got the grant. I think this was a two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar grant. And so the idea is that New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority has other grant programs that, um, this initial grant program could line you up to apply for, like a HOP grant, which is a housing opportunities grant to do, um, like ordinance rework and, and things down the line. So I think they're looking at this as a much longer-term, um, project that, you know, this is really, like Renee said, phase one, um, hoping that there'd be phase two and three and, um, but all of that in the world of grants is dependent on funding.
First of all, Renee, thank you very much for coming. It's, um, nice to be able to put a name with a face and a face with a name, so thank you. I have, um, maybe a follow-up question to Katie's question. Is there some way that maybe you could inform us of either ways we can utilize your services for community engagement, community feedback? Or maybe indicate things that have been done in other parts of the state or in other states that could help us maximize the impact of your position?
Sure.
Would that be possible?
Yeah, I can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Sure. Yeah. And, um, yeah, one thing I would encourage too, um, that's kind of come up and Peter has, um, but on the housing front, Peter has also taken this information. But as far as passing along some things, there's legislation right now going through or being proposed to go through this year on some key pieces regards to housing. So I would definitely recommend that and I can certainly pass that along in, um, in a fashion as well for the town. And I will be doing, um, bi-monthly newsletters as well. So some of that information I'm hoping to include in those, um, and that will get sent out to the towns as well. And so if there's any mail lists and things like that, I'll try to get on those and send them along. You're welcome. Anything else? Yeah, thank you guys, thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming, we appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thanks for your work.
I'd like to have a moment. I'd like us, I'd like to be able to understand where we are with regard to the proposed development of the building behind the shopping center. Where, where is that at at the moment? And I have this terrible feeling that there are sharks swimming around in the ro, in the, in the, in the ocean that would love to, um, bite the head off that. So, um, I, I don't, I just don't know, where, where, where are we at at the present moment? What are the other things that have to be done? And do we, as a, as the planning board, need to intervene in any way to make sure that what we have committed ourselves to with regard to this is happening?
So are you talking continuum or Twin Pines, sorry?
I'm talking about Twin Pines.
Yep, so, um, and that's what we were mentioning before, where, that we got their application last week. So they will be on our February twenty-eighth agenda. So that'll be the first public hearing of the final site plan review. I don't think, I have not received anything that's, um, you know, controversial from them. The package that we got is pretty similar to what they showed us at the last, um, meeting. They did make, and I might actually be on here already and I could just pull it up, um, although I really don't want to get too far into it, given that tonight is not a public hearing, um, for that project, it's not fair to the public. But, um, there are, you know, the application materials are on the website for the twenty-eighth already, so feel free to, um, you know, take a look at it. Not sure if the actual site plan is here. But we will, you know, open up the public hearings on our next meeting in two weeks. And I think, you know, from what I'm hearing, it still has a fair amount of support. So I, I don't think there's, um, you know, I'm not sensing the same sort of urgency, I guess. And then we don't really have a task before us right now until, um, we get into the next public hearing process on the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
Adam, have you heard anything about funding? They've been competing for funding through a variety of sources.
Yeah, I, I don't think that, that their next application round is until the summer. So, um, I think right now, um, with those funding, um, sources, when you get scored for your applications, you get a lot more points if you have all of your permits in hand. And so I think they're trying to get through that process because they, um, sort of took a shot last summer, um, not having their permits in place just because the funding round was there, they weren't really ready yet, but they said, what the heck, let's try. Um, and they didn't get the points because of that. So I think they're working diligently now to get all of that done so that hopefully, I think it's July first is the next round.
And will our traffic study be finished by the fif, twenty-eighth of February?
No, so, I mean, I can't say definitively no, but that's what I was saying earlier, where I think that might be a little optimistic to think that the engineer could turn it around in the, that time period, so. I mean, typically, final site plan reviews are two, at least two meetings for something of this size anyways, so I'm not super concerned about that. They've worked that into their, um, their timeline.
You know, Adam, uh, the thing about doing a traffic study now, doesn't seem as relevant as it would be in, say, July.
So, so that's not really how, um, as far as how traffic studies work, so, um, the, so the traffic study's been done. The, the applicant's engineers went out and did the traffic study and they presented that to us at, I think, the last couple of meetings, we talked about it. And so our engineer will review their traffic study. But traffic studies are done using, um, very specific coefficients that are from the International Transportation Engineers manuals that, um, you know, this is released nationwide. You know, this, there are these like five-volume books that you flip through that you say, okay, I have sixty units in here and sixty units of this size, this number of bedrooms. And then it gets to, uh, the number of trips generated per day for each unit, based on, they collect data all over the country of similar uses and similar developments, and they've been doing this since, like, the sixties, and so they are constantly updating that. And so then they use that to extrapolate to, um, existing data. So when traffic counts are put down, because obviously you can't do traffic counts everywhere in the region, um, the day you, you know, want to see your data from. So New Hampshire Department of Transportation has permanent traffic counters that are, um, installed in the roadways in various spots in the state, um, like exit ramps or under main state roads. So then when the Regional Planning Commission, um, goes around and lays down the tubes that you're probably familiar with driving over, um, you know, they look and say, okay, that data was collected the, you know, the third week of October. And then they go and they look at the statewide, um, permanent counters and they say, the third week of October, we had ten percent less traffic that week than we average in that region throughout the year. And so everything is seasonally adjusted. And so that's the data that they start with so that when you see a, a AADT that's reported by the state, it's gone through this long process of vetting based on what the, the sort of regional traffic at the time when it was collected was. So obviously, we have some ebbs and flows that are different in different times of year, and so when you see an average, it's going to be, you know, somewhere in the middle. But it's actually interesting, a lot of our traffic counts have gone down in the last twenty years. And I think a lot of it has to do with commuting patterns, you know, people are not commuting as much as, um, you know, they were three years ago, let alone ten years ago. I think it's transitioned a lot to, um, work from home. So, yep, so I, but I do just want to be clear that the, our, the engineer we're hiring is not doing their own study per se, they're just reviewing the study that's been conducted already.
Thanks, Adam, for that update. Are there any other, did you have anything else?
Well, I was just going to add, if they were to come up with some, something that they felt like was deficient, then, you know, we could ask them to do something more there. So, you know, the, the scope could change depending on what they find. Oh, that's okay. We had a quorum, so. Yep.
Great, any other comments, questions, before we adjourn? Okay, well, is there a motion to do so? Second? Anyone?
Thank you to Janet for the chocolates.
Thank you, all in favor, yes. Thank you for the chocolate, Janet. Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. Thanks for coming out.